Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Could I have a motion for the adoption of remote participation?
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you. Let's do our roll call. I think we are all here except for Dave O'Connor. Pam Nurse Sackton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, oh yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, um, have we received any public comment?
No.
Okay, um, I'll move on to the chair's report. I think we have a couple of items. Um, the first is as we're now getting ready to move into a new stage and on a new superintendent. Um, what I would like us to do is to set up a kind of a sub transition subcommittee or transition task force to really help us just, you know, make sure that, you know, as a school committee, we're thinking about on top of working with our new superintendent, doing what we need to do to make sure that the transition is successful. And just for continuity, I'd like to name to the task force, the people who were involved with the screening committee at the beginning of this process. So that would be Ford, Alice, Jeff, and myself. And again, the, you know, the role would be to be, you know, thinking about and looking at those things that we need to be doing to maintain a smooth transition reporting back to the school. Any questions about that?
Do you want a formal vote to create this?
Yes. Could I have a motion to that effect?
But can we do that without it being on the agenda? I guess it's the question.
That's also my question.
Um.
Could we do it at the next meeting? I mean, I think it's a great idea. I just, I think that if we do it, I mean, this is kind of an operational thing that if you do it without having it on the agenda, it could be questionable. What do, what do people think? Who've been at this a lot longer than I have?
You could do it twice. You could do it now, and then you could do it at the next meeting to make it official. At least we're showing the intent now.
Okay, so I would, I would move that our intent is to form this task force to help with the new transition with the new superintendent to include Pam Nurse, Nurse Ford Spalding, Alice DeLuca, and Jeff Stulven. As they're willing.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, well, let's do a vote. Pam Nurse Sackton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, oh yes. And the record should show that Dave O'Connor is present.
And for the record, I will abstain from this particular vote at the moment.
Okay, welcome, Dave. And we will, um, we will have a more formal vote at the next meeting. Okay, um, I think I'd like to turn it over to Steve.
Oh, good. Thank you. I just wanted to let the school committee know that I have been appointed the interim town administrator in Carlisle, starting in a couple of weeks, March 30. I don't think it'll impact my ability to be on the school committee, but I just wanted to let you know. They also tend to meet on Tuesdays, but I think we can alternate Tuesdays so I can participate in the school committee meetings and so just kind of unretired for four to six months anyway. So just wanted to make that announcement so people are aware of it.
Thanks. Congratulations on the position.
I guess. We'll find out.
You said yes, so it must be congratulations are due.
I guess. Thank you.
You didn't want to hold out a couple more months for Arlington?
Well, is Arlington going to go through a search?
Yes.
Really?
Yes. Current has given his notice for June.
Where's he going?
Nowhere.
Nowhere. Okay.
He's going home to spend more time with his family.
Wow, okay.
Lots of changes. Well, congratulations, Stephen. Thank you for, for informing all of us. Is there anything that anyone would like to add for the good of the organization? Okay, let's move on to the school report. George and Katie.
Hey, thank you. In your packet tonight, you have a draft school calendar with a 22, 23 school year. It is just a draft. We have not reviewed that with the the union. However, we have reviewed it with, I've been working on it with the school council, who has had some input into its creation. So I invite the members to take a look at it. Usually have a great eye for detail. So take a look and then tell me what you think and then we'll, we'll keep working on it and vote on it soon, but it's the best draft we could come up with at this time. Any questions about the calendar? Okay, for student professional.
George, we do have a couple of questions. I have Michael, then Alice.
Yeah, I can't see everybody on this, so thank you.
Thank, thank you, Pam. Is Juneteenth a state holiday and a no school day?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Alice.
Um, just a piece of information that may be useful is the US Senate voted to change the daylight saving times rules, so we wouldn't fall back. And that happened today. It still has to go to the House and the president, but they could change everything for school calendars.
Interesting.
That's why it's a draft.
Judy.
Judy, so thank you. Um, thank you, Alice, for mentioning that. It will impact the students in that without a change in, back to away from daylight savings in the winter months, it will be dark until about 8:00 AM. So it will have an impact on the kids getting to school anyways. But anyways, I just wanted to say it's refreshing having my kids been in public school until June 29th and 30th to see that you are a few weeks shy of that. So fingers crossed. So thank you.
Any other questions on the calendar? Okay.
Okay, under student professional development, the 92nd Annual Future Farmers of America State Convention is coming up. We have students from horticulture, biotech, environmental, and animal science now. Will be participating in individual and team demonstrations, workshops, and participating in the Agri Science Fair. We recently did a vaping workshop with the Middlesex Partnership for Youth. We'll probably run it again because at least one group had some technical difficulties when they were watching it, but it was good. We had a robust social emotional learning week. I really want to thank a school, one of our school psychologists, Sarah Gahan, did a tremendous job leading this effort and rallying students and staff. We had something every day for the kids to reflect upon. She worked with Dan. We got a whole bunch of new resources put up on the website. The librarian, we have the best librarian in the state, by the way, Ms. Gleason curated a whole bunch of fiction and nonfiction books for students to review as part of the week. So it was a really good week that we had. We're also planning for signs of suicide screening. That's in the works. We should probably complete that by the end of the year. So that'll get underway. I have, we have student ambassadors and some peer leaders that are going to be helping out on Sunday, April 10th. The Minuteman Parent Association is having an event. It's really a parent meet and greet. And the design really is for parents to meet other parents whose children are in the same CTE program. So this is really going to be the first big event that we've had in the school for parents since COVID. Because we never really, we never really were able to, we didn't have the occupancy when we first opened, and then it was over before we really began. So we're, we're pretty excited about that. Any questions about any of those activities that people like to ask?
Doesn't look like it, no.
Okay, great. And then, uh, item C, we need approval for an out of state field trip for the Heavy Construction Academy in Brentwood, New Hampshire on April 27th, weather permitting. Excuse me. The total of 22 students from electrical, plumbing, carpentry, and horticulture will be participating in the trip to the Heavy Construction Academy in Brentwood, New Hampshire, where they will experience hands-on eight different types of heavy equipment, including excavators, bulldozers, front-end loaders, backhoes, and dump trucks, and learn how to, some basic operational techniques, preventative maintenance, and heavy equipment safety, and from, you know, various industry professionals. So we need a vote to approve that, that trip to the Heavy Construction Academy in Brentwood, New Hampshire on April 27th, weather permitting.
I'm moved.
Any discussion? Jeff.
So two things. First, I'm just going to take up the mantle of that this trip, of course, corresponds to all of our school committee policies, et cetera, et cetera. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. And will this be the most fun they ever had getting into these big equipment and started, you know, moving the thing? They're not going to go racing down the streets in these things, right? They're just going to be supervised properly in these giant machines. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm all done.
So does this help them in getting any kind of certification for these machineries, or is this just an introduction?
More of an introduction at this point, but it's good.
I mean, this is the first one I've seen for the actual trade shop. So this is kind of interesting. So this is good. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions? Okay, let's vote. Pam Nurse Sackton, yes?
Michael Ruderman, I'd like to go on this, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes, and I agree with Michael.
Alice DeLucas, oh yes.
Okay.
Katie, are you next?
Yep. All right. So just some updates on the off-site projects. As the pandemic has started to subside, we have Al St. George, who's been appointed as our off-site project lead. So he is our trades and transportation pathway lead, and also an electrical instructor here at Minuteman. We have two different projects working with Habitat for Humanity, one in Acton and one in Concord that are both in the works. We have signed MOUs with them. We plan to start the electrical wiring on the Concord House this spring and then start our work in the Acton House in this fall. We're also going to be partnering with the Concord Historical Society to begin renovations as early as this fall on an 1810 farmhouse. There's also opportunities for some cemetery restoration, repairing a stone wall, so we could also get horticulture involved as well as our traditional traits. In some academic integration projects, looking at the history of the area and the history of the house involved. In terms of our north building expansion, approximately 1,800 square feet of the pre-engineered building, but due to some supply change delays, that building would be scheduled a little bit later. Instead of the spring, it's looking closer to the fall coming in. So our students can still work on the building once it comes in, but it will most likely be completed over the winter instead of over the late spring, early fall. And then our east campus expansion, the renovation of our existing 16,000 square foot building, again, is for animal science and our veterinarian clinic. Roughly half the building will be used for that, and the other half will be used for academic space. And then we are still having ongoing meetings with strategic partners right now to talk about the design of the building and what we want that to look like. Any questions on the ongoing off-site projects?
Jeff?
Yes, Jeff.
Uh, so horticulture knows how to work with stone walls?
Yep.
What kind of stone walls, what kind of stone walls can they, I mean, how much is this goes into masonry and how much is just kind of more?
I think the, the technical architectural landscaping term is a throne wall.
A throne wall. They throw the stones on top of each other.
Yes.
Well, no, there's a form, there's a, yeah. You might remember back when we were bidding out parts of this job. There was a, what, a 60-foot or 90-foot long throne stone wall that they wanted $300,000 for? And some of our horticulture landscaping kids gave a presentation to Gilbane and the architects about how they could do it for, I don't know, $20,000. And yeah, so a throne wall, it's a real thing. And if you spray it with goat's milk, in about a year or two, the stone will start to take on that green mossy look, and it'll look old and aged. So it'll have a throne stone wall look. Just something I thought you might want to know.
Any other questions? On throne walls or others? Alice.
Are we bringing in goats?
That's a distinct possibility.
Goes along with the vet tech.
Yes. And they do well keeping landscaping down and clear.
That's right.
Yeah. All right. Some updates on Skills USA. On Wednesday, March 2nd, we participated in the district technical competitions. We had a total of 56 students compete, representing 13 different shops. Minuteman earned a total of 17 medals, 14 golds and silver medal winners who will compete in the state competition on Friday, April 29th. We actually had a really cool opportunity where our advisors were so excited that the students received their medals. They wanted to tell them themselves instead of them hearing it through the grapevine. So they went around with a camera and photo documented telling each student that they had won a medal. There are some pretty awesome photos that they sent us just of sure excitement on the kids' faces. There's jumping motion. It was pretty great. They're able to capture that because they don't have a big medal ceremony because these are done remotely. So they still wanted to give the kids a little bit of a shock factor. So they really enjoyed that, and the pictures were definitely worthwhile to see. Questions?
Any questions? Sounds good. Jennifer.
I just have a quick question. Is there been a drop-off in participation just because of COVID and the non-participate, you know, and the non-personal aspect of it?
We actually had more students. It's interesting. We had more students participate this year than last year, and I think I credit that to having more students in the building full-time this year, learning more about skills. Our leadership team is very strong this year, and they purposely went around to every single program to talk to the students.
Because the, the ratio of kids in it to participate, you know, to medals is, is huge. I mean, that was very impressive. So, yeah, so I'm glad it's ramping back up. I was afraid we were losing kids because of. Okay, thank you.
Congratulations to all of them.
Yeah. Some updates on, next we have the Top Chef competition. So this is their ninth annual. So this in Top Chef as their senior project. So we have 12 seniors that are participating. Students will be split into six teams. One team member will prepare the dessert, and the other team member will prepare the entree. All students will complete research to complete their dish. They will also have an allergy or dietary restriction to meet when preparing their dish. There'll be three judges. Dr. B is the longest standing judge on the panel. There'll also be a scorekeeper. And then they'll be judged on the dish's appearance, flavor, texture, pairing, difficulty, and the student's ability to answer questions about their dish. Parents and family are also invited to attend. They have about 25 that are attending so far. So again, that will happen at the end of March, and it's a really fun event for them and all the kids.
Sounds.
Yes, I'm jealous. I'm not a judge. I am still jealous.
Katie, when is, it's March 30th, but when? And can school committee members attend?
Um, I assume it'll be around 11 or 12. I can check in with our culinary department, but I don't have a problem with you going.
Thanks.
You got clearance, Ford. You got clearance.
There you go.
It's 11:00 AM.
Good guess. All right. So the Capital Skills Grant, just some updates. So we were awarded the Capital Skills Grant for the fiscal year '22, the round two. We had applied for $300,000. We are awarded $150,000. We're currently awaiting our grant purchases. We ordered a Robotino, which is a flexible robot that allows students to gain skill sets in mechatronics, programming, sensory technology, motor and drive technology, control technology, and image processing. The best way I can explain it is it's like an internal DoorDash for Minuteman. You tell the robot to go get something, and it'll bring it back to you. So it's pretty cool that you can program it to do that type of stuff, especially in our warehouse. We're also awaiting an MPS, which is a modular production system, which is a miniaturized production line. So you can actually set it up in the warehouse, which is going to be really cool, and it's going to be equipped with intelisensors. So you can actually send things down through this assembly line and kind of learn the different aspects of how an assembly line works. So we're awaiting that stuff. It'll probably be here right around the end of May-June timeframe, but it is all ordered. So we're eager to reach, receive that stuff. Any questions on that?
Doesn't look it, no.
Great. And then the last one is the Capital Skills Grant for this fiscal year, round one. We can apply for up to 1.5 million. We're currently working on this grant for metal fabrication in animal science. We, again, we can request up to 1.5. We're working with our instructors and our industry partners as we speak to help us just identify any additional equipment needs. The grant will, the grant will help expand capacity and provide industry-recognized credentials in these programs. We are submitting the grant on March 24th. We will hear if we are awarded the grant on my favorite terms on or about May 12th. So that's when we'll get some word on the grant. Any questions on that?
Great.
Awesome. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Go ahead, Ford.
This is the MSBA project update. There's really been no change in status of the building and campus build-out since our last meeting. As you may recall, the roofing contractor will be coming back at some point for repairs based on the initial installment errors, and that will be taking place. The budget report for February 28th indicates a balance of $37,565 of uncommitted funds remaining in the budget after a transfer of $600,000 to the north building project. We do intend to start the MSBA closeout, thank God, process in May after the field project is completed, and this will include our closeout with Gilbane. The athletic field.
Ford, there's a question. Jeff.
Yes, my only question is that there, well, in any project of this scope, there are going to be errors that may that have to be corrected. So the question is now the roof needs to be corrected a little bit. Is that the last thing that we know about that needs to be corrected at this time? Are there other things that we are?
Pretty much everything's been taken care of, and that, that's the last thing that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Okay. Jennifer.
So does this roof issue have any problems with us putting solar on the roof?
No, nothing to do with that.
Okay, it's a different place, different issue.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next is the athletic field update. EverSource has completed its work, and the power is operational on the site. And just so you know, we expect to have a field of dreams, a lighting ceremony possibly on May 3rd. That's what we're thinking about. I think the corn pad, corn patch is going to have to grow, so horticulture is going to have to get out there pretty quickly to see Ed walk out of the corn pad.
I'm walking into the corn, Ford.
Okay, the plan is for Hamlock to mobilize this Monday, the 21st, and it looks like weather is going to cooperate and complete the baseball field in a day or two. Then the softball field will be done and the related fields to it. And they should all be done around, no later than April 1st. And then we, and at the same time, we'll be planting grass that will have to grow, but the seed will be put down. Baseball, softball, lacrosse is going to start practice on the stadium field on Monday. So that will be operational and also the baseball hopes and other sports hope to have home games sometime in March. Rental opportunities will follow. So that's the field report. Any questions? Jeffrey.
I, I, just a comment, I couldn't be more thrilled at the progress being made and how close we are to finishing this part of it. It is just inspirational. And it makes, it's one of the, hearing that this is probably the highlight of my evening here is hearing of this about, about the fields and the progress you're making on it after all this time.
As I've often said, it's the icing on the cake. And when you think of all the, the kids are going to be able to be playing, not just our own athletes, but the kids from neighboring communities, looking up at that building up there on the hill. I think it's going to increase our robots even more. It's, it's very exciting.
This is so important for, for equity. Minuteman should offer a full high school experience, and that includes, that includes being on the team.
Yeah, and then, then we have a no-cut-things program, so kids will be on that team. The north building update, Katie's given a little bit of that, but I'll add to it. Seaver Construction is our project manager and represented by Liz Field. As of yesterday, they were authorized to proceed with a project. They have started the process with Lincoln for the building permit. Insurance and performance bonds are being secured. Package Steel Systems of Sutton will be the, providing the fabricated packaged steel building and construction. We anticipate the actual construction will begin in August and be ready for the students to start their work in November. The student work will include plumbing, electrical, internal finishings, and installation of a screenery, et cetera. We expect the north building project to be ready for students in September of '23. Questions? Jeffrey, you don't have a question?
Sorry.
Okay. Now let me turn it over to Ed for the east campus building update to add to what Katie said.
So you may recall, we had an RFI. We sent it out to interested folks. We got a couple of responses. One very promising response. The other response was really from someone who has a curriculum piece. So anyway, we have, we have a potential partner. It's very exciting. They're very committed to education as we are. It's the Boston Veterinary Clinic, who we're having initial conversations with. The two principals of the company came out, or the, they own three veterinary clinics in the Boston area, in Tremont Street in Boston, at the Seaport District, and in Brookline. And they had been planning to expand and open three more clinics sort of in the metro west area. So the timing was perfect. It was, it was sort of a cold call because we didn't really know how else to do it, but it, I don't, I get overexcited when I start talking about it, okay? So I'm trying to be, boom. So anyway, they loved us. We love them. And we've been in conversation every week. They met Sasha, our instructor, and Katie. They really, we have this kind of a similar approach of transparency. Their clinics are designed in such a way so that the pet parent is never really separated from the patient. They can see through what's going on. They also work with Northeast University in the Work Co-op Program, where they have between 10 and 15 co-op students from Northeastern, and they actually take, took it upon themselves as a company to really. to really help these people move on a career pathway towards becoming a veterinarian. And one of, I guess, one of those folks has actually completed veterinary school, they've only been in business about ten years or so. So today, to kind of move this process along, today we had a meeting, Ford, myself, Rich, Greg joint with two attorneys in Boston that we used back in two thousand and fifteen when we were first crafting the framework for public-private partnerships, which we had intended to be with Lexington. So they're revising a draft MOU in, in light of the legislation that was passed in two thousand and eighteen that allows Minuteman to enter into long-term leases with compatible partners. Our, our architect Greg knows their architects, they've been having some discussions where just sharing a lot of information now and the attorneys will be working on some key questions that we have around the partnership itself and that key question for us is, do we lease them the entire building and they manage the renovation of the vet clinic area and the academic space? And then sort of as a contribution in kind, we get to use those spaces, so they're working on that information. We want to make sure that the procurement requirements under the law are being met. And so that process is going, but it's, it's really exciting, it's a great company. They love Minuteman. They, it's, it's better than I could have ever have hoped for, so.
Yeah, very good news, any questions?
Okay.
So this is just, this is the Tremont School, is that what the, the building, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Judy had a question, Pam.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you because I know this has been, you know, a goal and it sounds is so, it's, it's a home run, so thank you.
Well, thanks for LinkedIn. The COVID mask options, we began masks optional a few Mondays ago. I'd say maybe ten to fifteen percent of the staff and kids continue to wear masks as they're want to. We've had no real issues, it seems to be working fine. I, we were talking today that kids still seem to need mask breaks even though they're not, they don't have a mask on. So we're going to be encouraging teachers to, you know, take a walk if they need to or something, especially in days like today. That's really all I have on the mask option, I know most of the towns now have made it optional in the last week or so. F Y twenty-three.
Um, Ed, yeah. Jeff.
That's great, as long as everybody understands in the back of their mind that we may have to reverse course on this as well. So the same thing is happening in New South, I tend to wear my mask at least for another few weeks until I see if we're really at a, you know, going to stay at this low E B for a while. But we have to understand and everybody has to understand that there is a chance that we may have to go back to masks at some point in the future. And I love seeing the kids' faces for the first time in, in, in two years and I tell them all that they're far more handsome than I had guessed.
Anything else on masks?
Budget, so I've been giving presentations with some of you in Concord, Arlington, Acton, Bolton, Needham and Lexington, we've had a lot of pre-work go back and forth. So I think we met with some folks there as well. The story that we're trying to tell is why member town assessments are going up so much and it's really a story of enrollment and people seem to be understanding that. Arlington FinCom, which has twenty-two members or so, voted unanimously in favor of the budget and their assessment is close to eight million dollars. Even Bolton where it was up, their enrollment's up sixty percent, but their assessment's up only thirty-five percent. Was also in Concord, we had a good meeting a few nights ago. I'm assuming the FinCom voted in favor of it, Steve, you're.
Yeah, FinCom did unanimously support the budget after we left.
Right. So a hard year to explain the story, but it seems to be getting through and you know, we'll just continue till we get the, till the end of June. Any questions on budget or, and if you have meetings coming up, please let me know. It's kind of fun going in person now. But I have to wear good pants. Judy.
Judy. Um, I mean Lexington, we start in two weeks and we just voted, we took a poll with county members and majority want to go remote, so that's what we're going to be doing.
Really?
Yes. I, I agree, if the kids can be in class, we should be sitting in the halls too.
Opening ceremonies at Lexington are so inspiring.
That's our fife and drum corps all the way. Um, my question for you is, have you been given a time certain date from Lexington?
No.
Okay, I will work on that, thank you.
Thanks. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to finance. Steve, Rich?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to Rich because everything, everything on the agenda tonight, our items we reviewed and, and voted to support in front of the school committee this evening, so I'll let Rich get into the details. And we may, I'm not sure, we may have someone to talk about the retirement board local option in case people want some detail about impact on our, on our full funding.
Excellent, thank you Steve, thank you Madam Chair. Before you, in your pocket was a, the second quarter revolving account report and this is, hasn't changed much since the first recorder report. And you'll see that the negative numbers are still representative and those are still because of the reason of the COVID situation we dealt with for the last two years. But you will, there are three things I want to bring to your attention. And first of all, I'm going to go down to child development where you had a fifty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and seven cent deficit. And you can see that we're going to predict to have a deficit of thirty thousand seven, sorry, I own my glasses on, so thirty thousand dollars and, and seven hundred and one dollars. We are going to utilize, we have been given a permission to use Esser grant money in order to offset that cost, which was you, basically for paying teachers in, in AIDS. So that's one thing that's really good news and so that should offset that entire deficit. The second one is the food services, we had a hundred and six thousand six hundred and twenty, six hundred and twenty-three dollars in change. We are experiencing some really good reimbursements with the free and reduced, I mean, the free lunches and so forth and as well as federal aid coming in, so we predict a, a minor positive number. So that's a good news and the last is, I'm going to go swing back up to the top with the MTI. You can see that the one thing that you don't have a second community ed line, section anymore, we are proposing, and that's part of the vote, is to approve the reclassification of adult education plumbing under Fund one-one-zero-zero-zero-zero, Community Education to Fund one-six-zero-zero-zero-zero, MTI post-secondary. This just makes sense since we do not, no longer have community education programs. We'd like to see that with your approval, go into that MTI and be overseen, even though it's been overseen by Nancy and MTI for, for the last year and a half or so since the community education program was terminated.
Okay, I have a motion to combine Fund one-one-zero-zero-zero-zero, Community Education, Adult Education Plumbing with Fund one-six-zero-zero-zero-zero, Minuteman Technical Institute.
They'll move.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
So I said, Finance Committee recommends.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move to the vote, Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Abe O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice DeLucas, so yes.
Okay. Um, one of, Rich, you want to move on to the next?
Thank you, Madam Chair, the next is the general fund report. I'm sure you've already looked at it, but we're going to ask for an approval, vote to approve second quarter transfers as presented. These transfers are to clean up based on the, some funds that were going into the negative or were in the negative base because of the reorganization of the human resources, the business office and so forth, substitute along to the ability inability to, or ability to use long-term subs and so forth, as well as student transportation. As you may recall, the contract for student transportation is broken up into three different categories. Regular transportation, after-school transportation, athletics, and it's, when it was put into the budget, it was put in as a whole. So we're going to parse out the transportation for athletics and put into the athletic budget, so.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the second quarter F Y twenty-two transfers as presented?
To move.
Second.
Uh, Jeff.
Hi, so my question is the, could you explain the reduction in classroom teachers of three hundred ninety-one K and the increase in psychological services of two hundred and ninety-two K?
Nikki, help me, well, if I'm incorrect with what I'm saying, is that some of those items were just misclass, misclassified? So that's why we're, we're transferring that money to the proper classification.
And that's correct, there are three, three FTEs, two social workers and one adjustment counselor that were budgeted to special education teacher function code, so we're properly classifying those to function twenty-eight hundred to be able to properly report on our end of the year report to DESI. The other portion is our long-term sub-line. We had a military leave and a maternity leave, so the portion of that salary that wasn't going to be paid out was reclassified to cover the long-term sub that was required for those positions.
Okay, so there's no reduction in teaching services here, it's just that you're putting people who are in human beings who are one category, keeping them, but they go into another category because that matches what the state wants more.
Absolutely, just for reporting purposes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, let's vote, Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Abe O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Oh, Stu Lucas, so yes.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is the Minuteman Retirement Board Local Option Acceptance Memorandum. I am going to turn this over to Nikki and Zandor Zaplin, who is our representative on, from the Minuteman Retirement Board and they can do a presentation for you.
All right, so I'll just kind of big picture explain this local acceptance memo as kind of described is to provide parity between our Minuteman Retirement Board system and the other retirement board systems. There are three items, but the one kind of most important that would have a financial impact is the COLA base, which we went over with the Finance Committee as it would affect our accrued liability. And happy to answer any questions that you have, Sandor Zaplin also here is our Retirement Board Administrator. So happy to answer any questions you guys have in, in relation to this.
Okay, any questions? Jeff.
Is, is this similar to COLA adjustments we've made in the past and do we know what the total impact on this will be to Minuteman moving forward?
Yeah, so at the bottom of the memo, it does, we had an actuary, actually look at this, the PARAC actuary and increasing from thirteen thousand to fourteen thousand would change our accrued liability by, in total by eighty-two thousand dollars. So we were looking at that, when we were looking at the increase, what it would be from thirteen to fourteen thousand or thirteen to fifteen thousand and the retirement board voted that fourteen thousand would be appropriate and in line with our other member towns. Julia also had included in the packet PARAX Retirement Board funded ratio. And you can see on this that Minuteman is in the top five funded ratios of other retirement boards. They're fourth on the list, ninety-four point two percent funded, so this would extend the liability that we owe to F Y twenty-eight instead of F Y twenty-seven.
And as you say, is in line with what other member towns are doing.
Absolutely.
Okay, so thank you for dealing with all the myriad details of this, I have some idea of how complicated some of the issues are to keep all this straight.
Sandor, anything I missed there?
No, that was a great summary, there are two other local options and one is just a ten-year ordinary disability, so someone who becomes disabled but not because of their job could retire with an ordinary disability in years. All but two of the hundred and four local retirement boards have adopted this provision. And the second is the member survivor allowance, which is just a, it's a minimum for someone who is working and dies while employed. It provides just a minimum allowance to the survivor higher than if it was calculated normally.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, we, we asked, we asked the, the committee to approve the Minuteman Retirement Board Local Options Acceptance Memorandum.
Hey, could I have?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second? Okay, we have a second, anything further from the committee? Okay, let's move to, let's move to our vote, Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Abe O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Oh, Stu Lucas, so yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, last, we have two donations for, for scholarships. One in, from Robert Kelly for the thousand dollars that are resent, we send as scholarship. And another one for twenty-five hundred dollars from Allison Huntington to go towards a McLaughlin Scholarship. We asked the board to approve these monthly donations.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Abe O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Oh, Stu Lucas, so yes.
Anything else for the finance report?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to committee reports, the C A A committee, Jeff.
I believe that Anthony has an update for us on how things are going.
Great.
All right, good evening, everybody, so yeah, so on February eighteenth, we sent out, Dr. B, if you could go to the next slide, I appreciate it, thanks. So sorry, on February eighteenth, we sent out our first set of offers of admission. The deadline for those students to reply was March eighth. We over-enroll at that time intentionally because we know that a number of students will, you know, decline their offer of admission. So on March ninth, we were able to offer another eleven students admission, we're still waiting to hear back from two of them, they have Uh, they have till tomorrow night at midnight. So our class is in essence in shape for now. Um, over the next weeks and months, ribs and drabs of students who uh, who will um, who have accepted, who will change their mind. It happens every year. Um, for the, for folks who apply to private schools, March tenth was the day that they found out um, about their private school admission. So I I've already heard from like one or two families who, you know, the timing doesn't work out exactly. So that that always happens for, you know, a handful of students every year. Uh, so as you guys know, um, we're shooting for a class of a hundred and seventy-five students in the class of twenty-twenty-six. We had two hundred and seventy-two qualified applicants, which is a term from our admissions policy, which means that we have all their records and they completed their interview within the February fifteenth deadline. Um, it's a significant increase in the past, you know, from the class of twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-six, almost a twenty-five percent increase. Um, and you know, our total enrollment is going to go up um, to about seven hundred, um, which is about a ten percent increase. Uh, Dr. B, if you go to the next slide, please. Uh, so this is just a um, overview chart here. So you can see um, in the first column are the slots that um, the school committee voted on the slot allocation based on the design enrollment of the school. Uh, we had two hundred and seventy-two qualified applicants uh, between both the original offers and the more recent offers. We've offered two hundred and fourteen students. Uh, we have a hundred and seventy-nine who have said yes with two outstanding. Uh, from my conversations, I believe those are both um, yeses as well. We had thirty-three students decline their offer, and then in the final column, you can see um, the numbers of students currently on the waiting list. Um. This is just some extra data that we talk about a lot of, a lot in the CAA, which is just the percentage of eighth graders who are applying to the school. Um. So you know, just we'll continue to look at this um, in more detail, but you know, we, I believe Alice did some math at one point where we could fill up the school with six percent from every town. Obviously, some towns um, send far greater or far greater than that apply in in a few towns. Um, that is below, so between two and three percent. And this is just a look at, you can see that in most towns, the number of applicants is increasing um every year over the past three years with probably the most dramatic one, I would say, is um, Concord, uh, at least especially, yeah, if you look between twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-six, the the increase is significant. So um, that's where we're at right now with admissions. Like I said, um, now we move on to welcoming our families um into the community, which we'll be doing in the coming months, and then getting the kids um uh, diagnostic assessments, recommendations for courses, um, and then, you know, passing that off to Diane um, for scheduling. So it's an ongoing process, but the the bulk of it, you know, is is coming to a conclusion. There's any questions?
Um, Alice and Michael.
I just wanted to say how continually I am struck by the importance of what Minuteman does for so many kids and how many um, how many more kids need service of this type in the state of Massachusetts? It's absolutely mind-boggling. I wish that the rest of the school districts would learn more from what's being done here. Um, and it it struck me because it's something that happened with a friend of a friend this week, and I just um, unrelated to Minuteman, I'm just astonished at what goes on here and how important it is.
Thanks, Alice. Michael.
Thanks, Pam. Um, Anthony, uh, with such a a large over over uh, application uh, almost every town, uh, how are kids with special needs faring? Uh, will the composition of the incoming class be markedly different, given, given the, you know, really intense competition, I would say, between uh, you know, the kids getting in and and the and the first kids who aren't getting in?
Yeah, it's a fair question, Michael. It's hard to say at this point. All that information is voluntary um, on the application. So I mean, I've looked at it, but it's uh, what I've looked at in terms of the voluntary information, and what we usually find is that a significantly larger population is on an IEP. They think we, you know, maybe are going to hold it against them, which we don't, but you know, I understand. Um. So it it the percentage of students who applied who indicated they were receiving special education services is the same, is like the same percentage of students who are coming here in the fall who are receiving special education services. Is it more or less than what we currently have? Uh, it it could be a little less, but it's representative of the students who applied, based on the voluntary information. We'll we'll get a better look at that. Um. Uh, once we get them into our system and, you know, their SASs are lined up and all that.
I think it's important to emphasize, though, that the regulations require that we are blind to the special ed status of applicants. We are not supposed to know. If people volunteer it, that's what they do. But we don't figure in special ed status at all into the decision to offer admission. That would be a violation of of the regulations.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Anthony. It's actually very exciting to see that these numbers year over year are not only holding steady but growing.
I just have a one final comment. Uh, again, what we have to do is we have to deal possibly with the fact that we're going to have disappointed parents and students for the first time. And interestingly, at the meeting with Needham last night, um, it was the, one of the FinCom members who was uh, most surprised and disappointed by the fact that we would have students who could not get in. And he kept trying to bring up ideas to allow more students to be able to attend the school. So that's the kind of, um, that's quite a response, and I look forward to um our ability to assist with this issue as we uh, go through our um, plans to expand. And that's really all all for the um uh, CCA unless there's a CAA unless there are some questions.
Any questions? Okay, let's move on to policy.
Hi, so in your packet on page thirty-eight, um, you should have uh, use of facilities policy KF. This is the second reading for this, and as you know, um, Rich Egan had provided us with a copy of the um background documentation on how they will um, do the procedures associated with it. So this would be a second reading vote to approve policy KF use of facilities for second reading as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Um, anybody have comments?
I just assume that the, any of those kind of funny things that were um, coordinated between the two riches um, policy or I guess there were some things that didn't quite match up. I think those have been, those have been reconciled. Specifically, there was the um, deposit issue. So one of the documents said the deposit had to be fifty percent at some point, and the other one said it had to be fully upfront. Have those been normalized?
Jennifer, yes, they have been corrected.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Let's move to a vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Uh, Ford.
He's not there.
Ford seems to have stepped away, Jennifer.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes. Thank you, so um.
Um, actually, Ford is back, Ford, we were just voted um, for second reading on, I can bring my agenda back up here, on the um, use of facilities policy.
Ford Spaulding voted, yes.
Thank you. So uh, I just wanted to thank everyone that worked on that. The reason that these things go so smoothly at the school committee is because Amy and Rich and all of the other people at the school district, and then and Judy and I spent a lot of time reading them and going over all the little details. So thank you again to everybody who does that. Uh, the next one is on page fifty-seven in your packet. This is the long-term OPEB funding policy, and you're going to recall that at the last school committee meeting or the one before, we as a school committee agreed that we would bring forward a long-term OPEB funding policy. And uh, here it is. So um, this is a first reading vote on the policy. This was developed based on the work of the OPEB Subcommittee. Um, there is one piece that we really didn't know how to word. Um, and that is going to be coming back in the second reading version. I just want to give you a heads up on that. Um, the uh, I forget what um Steve calls Jim Gamal like uh, Papa OPEB, so Grandpa, okay. So we got a little input from Grandpa OPEB on this, and um, he suggested that we add the language in the second time. It says the annual review of the funding plan by the finance subcommittee will also include calculations based on the most recent OPEB actual actuary evaluation of a fifty percent of the service cost and be fifty percent of the service cost plus two and a half percent of the net OPEB liability and report these as aspirational funding goals for the school committee. So you'll see that in writing. But I just wanted to let you know that that's going to come back into this policy. Maybe, assuming that the the policy Subcommittee, you know, goes through it, decides they really like it and all that. But that is, that is something that is not present in the current one, but we should still vote uh, to approve uh, for first reading, the long-term OPEB funding policy DLCA.
Okay. Okay, motion, a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Jennifer.
Okay, so I have one question about the new positions. It says for a new staff position, but then it says further on that for each new employee that's been hired. I think it really needs to be, are we is it only newly created positions that aren't existing, or is it for every new employee hired?
Uh, I think the intent was for just new positions that were created.
Right, but I don't think it's clear. I mean, what do people think? Cause
That's fair.
Okay.
It's not.
I'm fine, I'm fine with it either way, but but I think if we say new staff positions, we need to reiterate it that for each new staff employee, you know, each new position created. Right?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, Jeff.
So I want to compliment the OPEB Subcommittee and its members again for turning an issue which was um, hurting my head into one that I could understand. And my only uh, concern is that one way or the other, our member towns are on the hook for this, right? Because eventually they're they're in charge. So I'm just wondering if we've talked to any of their FinCom, FinComs about us adopting this policy, if they think that this is a good way for us to go. Uh, that's that's really my only question. As far as understanding this and wanting to move forward, I'm all set.
Well, I I could just say, uh, in terms of the Concord FinCom, uh, we have presented this a- as well to the Concord Select Board, and they were, they were, they were on board with it all. I don't know about other towns, but.
Jeff, our, our lead is appreciative.
Okay, I've talked to our finance director, and she certainly was appreciative that um, we were trying to fund this, and actually, I specifically told her that when the ESCO lease expires, part of this was to put that funding towards OPEB. And she thought that was a great idea, so.
Right.
And for Lexington, um, actually, a member of the um, finance staff um, has attended a couple of our meetings in the audience, and she has told me she loves what we're doing, so.
Okay.
Great.
Um, so I have a quick question, Jennifer. Which uh, where is the exact word that you want to change?
So it's the new positions OPEB factor.
Yep.
And it says, when adding a new staff position, the school district administration will add an additional ten thousand for each new employee that has been hired. But I think we need to clarify for each new position that is being created.
Yeah. Okay, so in the third line of new position, instead of new employee that has been hired, it should say for each new position that has been created.
Yep.
So could we amend a motion to um, change that wording?
Okay, so so moved.
Second.
Okay. Um, any discussion on the amendment? Okay, let's vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes, thank you.
Was that just for the amendment? Do we now?
We gotta do it once again.
Oh, yeah.
We're not quite done yet. Okay, so now that we've done that, are we ready to go and vote? To move it to first reading? Okay. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Oh, so Lucas Joe, yes. Uh, thank you this time, finally.
Yes, and thank you to the policy committee. Um, so secretary's report. Alice. You're on mute.
I did not get any comments.
But I have a motion to approve the draft minutes of January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two as presented.
I moved.
Second.
Um.
Point of order, do we need to vote them separate or two kind of minutes here? There's the um, was this when we had the public meeting and then the our meeting? And if that's so, do we have to vote them separately, or do we have to at least say we're voting on them together? For the record.
Well, that's a good question. Um, Jeff, I don't remember that we had, we have had two sets of minutes bef- prior. Maybe someone else with a better memory than me?
We could just vote uh, to approve the budget hearing in regular school committee minutes of January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two.
Right, as long as you mentioned both names, then in the motion, then I'm all set.
So so in the motion, which to approve the budget hearing and school committee minutes of January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Okay. So any comments? Now, let's vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni abstain.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, so now we need a motion to enter executive session. Not to return to open session. Um, that will include school committee, the superintendent Julia. Um, and will we have the attorney?
Yes, Peter Sumner's attorney, and I believe Michelle McNulty.
Okay. Um, and for the following reasons pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-eight-three, to discuss strategy with respect to likely litigation with the town of Lincoln regarding permit fees of an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. And to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, namely the superintendent director elect, the elect, well, not really elect, um.
The tenant, candidate.
Designate.
Designate.
Superintendent Director, um, Dr. Kathleen Dawson.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, question?
Yes. Um, I thought I read someplace that you want to enter back into um, open session?
Not tonight.
Um, that, yes, at this point, we're not entering back into open session. We are not. Okay. Thank you.
Um, moving to the vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Oh, so Lucas Joe, yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and we will see you on the other Zoom link for the executive session.
Thank you.